Let's go ahead and start with the roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carver?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rakers?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
And Ms. Quattrucci is absent and I'm filling in in her absence. So item number two is the approval of the agenda. Jennifer, you've got the motion.
So I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented or amended.
Second?
I second it.
Okay.
I'd like to move to amend the agenda to include personnel appointments coming after the consent agenda. Should be...
After item 18.
After item 18.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, let's have a vote on the modification of the agenda. We have a roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carver?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rakers?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
The motion passes 6-0, so now let's vote on the approval of the agenda as amended. We had a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carver?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rakers?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
All right, Board and District Communications, Dr. Goran.
Thanks, everybody, for being patient and being with us tonight. And it is a pleasure, as we are on the eve of the last day of school and on the eve of summer break, to celebrate everything that's gone on in this school year. And I just want to, more than anything, tip my hat to outstanding teachers, outstanding administrators and staff who've made this school year a successful one across the district. And I think we should be very proud of the work that our colleagues are doing, day in and day out, and night in and night out, and through the weekends, to make a difference in the lives of children in Evanston and Skokie. So I couldn't say thank you enough to all of the colleagues who are ending school tomorrow. I do want to make my plea, as I did at graduation speeches last week, that it's a wonderful time for all of our children and families to read, to read again, to read some more, and to read some more and some more. And indeed, we've got outstanding programs that go on during the summer through some of our wonderful community partners, whether it's Foundation 65, or the YOU, or the YMCA, and especially summer reading programs with our colleagues at the Evanston Public Library, who do just a fabulous job in pushing summer reading. So I want to just underscore that as we head into the summer months, and hopefully we will head into the summer weather at some point soon. And that's my report.
All right. Anyone from the Board, Communications for the community? All right, now let's move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda and the action items. Candace?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointment leaves, appointments leaves, retirement separations, destruction of closed session auto recordings for May 2013, the May 2015 list of bills, school treasure reports and budget amendments, April 2015 school treasure reports, gift acceptances for Lincolnwood District and Park School, transportation hazards for fiscal year 16, click insurance renewal premium payments for fiscal year 16, self workers' comp renewal premium payments for fiscal year 16, our prevailing wage resolution for fiscal year 16, working cash fund transfer for fiscal year 16, transfer of interest from the debt service fund resolution, and PMA resolution, and finally, the steam tables -- well, no, steam tables for Chute Middle School and the Lincoln School Stormwater Project bid rejection.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carver?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rakers?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
And Ms. Quattrucci?
Motion passes 6-0. And, Dr. Goran, back to you for an introduction.
Yes, and I'm really happy to do this.
All right.
If I may, Richard, I'd like to squeeze in two other comments that I should have put in my comments. I had the joy with John Price of attending graduations last week, and we -- John actually spoke at Nichols, and I spoke at Ryus Park, Rhodes, Haven, King and Chute. And I just want to say what joyous occasions graduations are, and how much fun it was to be with families and the community and the faculty at each of the schools. And then one final note, as I mentioned in one of the last -- in the Finance Committee meeting, we are pending final approval of a $640,000 grant from the Noyce Foundation in Palo Alto, California, that will provide resources for our STEM educators and informal STEM educators, those educators who work at YU, YMCA, and other places around the city, along with partners from Northwestern, to work together on professional learning around STEM education wherever it occurs. We'll report more about that in August, when we believe we will have the final grant. I just wanted to give that heads up. It's now my distinct pleasure to announce some appointments that we've recommended and the Board has approved. And these are at two of our schools, three of our schools. And let me first start with Nichols, where I'm announcing -- I'm announcing the appointment of our new principals. And it's with great pleasure that, for Nichols Middle School, that I reintroduce all of us, Adrian Harries. He returns to the district to take this position after having leadership experiences in District 89, which is in Maywood, District 86, which is in Joliet. He has been a principal here at Bessie Rhodes. He is a graduate of Nichols, so you truly can go home again. He's a graduate of ETHS and the University of Illinois. He's got a deep passion for doing everything he can to make a difference in the lives of kids. He focuses on social and emotional learning. He has focused on restorative justice, and he has a deep passion and great experience on instructional improvement. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you, the Board of Education, and to the community, Adrian Harries, the new principal of Nichols Middle School.
Thank you for the wonderful welcome. I'm just looking forward to coming home, and truly coming home, as a graduate of Nichols. I've been in education for 20 years, and my hope is that I can bring that 20 years back to Nichols and we can move our building forward. So I'm just looking forward to the challenge. So thank you.
And do you have members of your family here tonight?
Of course I do. With me, I have my daughter, Amaris, my other daughter, Mila, my niece, Ymani, and my sister, Lisa.
It's now my pleasure to continue homecoming and to announce the newly appointed principal of Oakton Elementary School. This is Wayne Williams. Wayne returns to the district after being principal at the John Hay Academy in Chicago. He served here in District 65 as a psychologist with many of colleagues who are still here and still both in the psychologist corps as well as in the principal corps. He's keenly focused on instructional rigor, using data to actually make decisions, creating school climates that are conducive to teaching and learning and the growth that we care about. He's a graduate of North Carolina State with a BA. He went to the University of North Carolina for a master's degree. He's a doctoral candidate at the University of Illinois Chicago Program on School Leadership. And it's indeed a pleasure to welcome Wayne Williams, principal of Oakton Elementary.
I just want to say good evening to everybody. I'm super excited to have the opportunity to return to such a diverse, creative, committed community like Evanston. It's been a very long time, yet it seems like yesterday. So I'm super excited to see so many faces I remember, and I'm open and excited about the new challenges. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to a strong year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's also my pleasure to announce that I've asked, and she's accepted, I've asked Michelle Cooney to serve as the interim principal at Lincoln Elementary over the next year. Michelle has served as assistant principal at Lincoln for the last two years. She's been an interim principal at the Learn Charter Network. She was literacy director at the Suter Montessori School, and has a wide variety of experiences in and around schools and schooling. A bachelor's of science from Northwestern, a master's of science from Northwestern, and a master's of arts in teaching and learning from National Lewis University. And Michelle, are you here? I don't know if Michelle's here. So Michelle's probably at the school getting ready to close the school, and so we'll tip our hat to her, but join me in congratulating her as well.
And just on behalf of the Board, to Principal Williams and Principal Harries, welcome back, and we are excited for you to join the team and look forward to many good years to come in both of your schools. So the next item on the agenda is the update on math placement. And for that and for the innovations for learning, I thought we would use the following sequence. First, start with an update from the administration, and then if there are people from the public who want to comment, to comment at that point, and then the Board will have their discussion based on both of those inputs. So for the math placement update, Dr. Goran, do you want to start off?
Yeah, let me start, and let me call -- for those of you who are here and are interested in this subject, there's a memorandum that I believe is out on the table, if you haven't already picked it up, that is addendum to what we presented in the Board presentation. So I'm going to frame the issues around math placement as we presented them in the Board Book. Thank you very much. Sorry. And then talk about how, in response to concerns and in response to how we move forward with our math placement, we're suggesting next steps, which is really in the memorandum. Just so we're clear on terms, when I use the word "math acceleration," in this particular case, it means skipping. It means skipping a grade level. So if I use the word accelerating from fourth grade to sixth grade, or from fourth grade, it means skipping fifth grade and going into sixth grade. So just so that we're clear on terms. And I do want to say that the work that's embedded in both memoranda, the one that's in the Board Book and the one that we present to you now, reflects a considerable amount of time from Jess, Reyes, and Barb Hiller, and members of our math team, from a concerted core of -- a concerned core and a deeply committed core of math teachers across the system who've been deeply involved, members of the math team. We've had a series of conversations with our colleagues at District 202 as well. And so I think the work that's embedded here is really important. And indeed, we've had interactions, I know on Jess's first day on the job, we worked with many of the families who are involved with the Math Matters Group, and we've had feedback and engagement across the Board and the community. So we wanted to come forward with both our rationale for where we are and where we're suggesting that we go. Couple other pieces of context. As we think about mathematics and as we think about our curricular and instructional offerings for all children in the district, the Common Core state standards for mathematics has really changed what's taught, what's expected to be taught, and what's changed. And at risk of sounding old, what I was taught in sixth grade is not what's taught in sixth grade anymore. And actually, that's probably the sixth grade curriculum, given my ripe old age, was something that I probably learned in ninth or 10th grade. And again, Jess and colleagues will be a little more clear on this. I think a second piece of context is that as we do math placement, which is very important, as we do acceleration or skipping, which is very important, we also know that what's important is our issues around professional learning and professional development for all of our educators, being clear about that with our community members and families. And we know that it's really important to pay attention to differentiation and what really goes on in a math class in a particular school in the district. And both that professional development piece and the differentiation piece is actually really key and really important. And the way we see things as we've been moving forward is we need to, and we want to spend a considerably more amount of time on professional learning and differentiation. I think that's a piece for us. Last year, in the -- from what we have collected, the skipping decisions, the acceleration decisions were much more school-centric. They were dependent a bit on the conversation and the dialogue at the classroom level and at the principal level, school by school, and they varied across the district. And so that led to some level of inconsistency. Doesn't mean that that was bad or wrong, but it led to some level of inconsistency. And so what we've been working on over this past year is to create a system that we can move forward on in terms of identifying children who can accelerate, who can skip a grade. We wanted to build a program and a process to actually move forward in a consistent way across the district, so that whether you went to Oakton or Orington, or Bessie Rhodes, or Lincoln, and just cross those ways, that the process would be the same for all children in terms of qualifying for advancement. So we changed a process, and we've actually used three different ways of assessing the ability for young people to actually skip a class, using the math scores, using a qualifying exam, and teacher observations and then teacher input. The qualifying exam tests, and again, I'm much more of a layperson, so I'll leave this to Jess and Barb to explain in even more detail, but the qualifying exam not only tests current knowledge of your current grade level, but also knowledge of the grade level that you're going to skip. And so that the combination of the two are actually really important. One of the concerns that we have, and this was expressed in the original memo, is on how well our skip students do in their accelerated classes. So when a student skips, how well are they doing in that next level? And indeed, some of our preliminary data analysis show, and this shows in the memo, that 40% of our skip students are not meaning expected gains on the map test. And indeed, these -- that begs for me lots of questions over time of to what extent are our kids really succeeding once they skip? To what extent are they succeeding in District 65 and District 202? And those are longer-term questions that we need to pursue. The initial memo showed how students fared based on the new scheme that we've worked on, the map test, the qualifying exam, the teacher input. And I believe this is a good system. I also believe that we are a continuous improvement, we're a learning organization, so we can learn how to make the system even better. But it's a good system to be able to set some thresholds and to make sure that we're appropriately advancing or allowing children to skip, those children who can actually be successful in the next level classroom. And I want to make sure that we do that. As we initially put data out there, we realized that based on past practices over the time in the district, that the numbers of those students who would be advanced, and then those students who would actually have the opportunity to appeal that advancement, were not close to being equal in a couple of different places. And since we're in a first year of this, we decided to actually spend a good part of our weekend looking at the data and looking at the information, and asking ourselves and then doing the analytics, how can we stay at a course on a system that sets the threshold and allows us to place kids in ways that makes sense for their success? And how can we make first-year adjustments so that we're not taking a system anew and not paying attention to those children who may not have qualified the first time around? So what Jess and Barb will present is our approach to how we're looking at this, and I guess Jess will present with Barb patting him on the back. And again, talk about how we made adjustments based on what was portrayed in the initial memo to move forward for this coming year while we set up a set of work tasks over the next several years. And again, those work tasks, for me, really are the questions around how well our students are doing. How well do those students who skip in District 65, how well do they do when they land in that next level class? How well do the District 65 students do when they land at ETHS? And how well do District 65 students do, and do they get the prerequisites for the classes and the advanced classes at District 202 that are necessary for success in high school? So those are a bunch of questions that are lingering for me that we'll continue to work on over time. But Jess, I'll turn it over to you.
Cool. Thanks, Paul. And just want to say thank you to all the teachers that were a part of this work, as well as Barb and Peter, John, for your support, as Paul's mentioning, learning and growing in this work. So I don't want to belabor the point too much, but there is some context to set here. And I think Paul's done a beautiful job doing that, and that is that there was a process that started in January that included a number of stakeholders that essentially impacted the process. And we are in phase three, which is the student placement aspect of the work that we're doing, where we're sharing the data. The larger context is that we are transitioning in our course sequence such that by the year 16, 17, instead of a course skipping scheme where students are missing critical learning that sometimes happens when we skip entire courses, that we are moving towards 16, 17 being a year of acceleration as compacting versus course skipping. So Dr. Goran alluded to earlier the streamlining of our instruments that we use for math placement, that rather than the eight or nine different instruments that were used last year, we streamlined to three instruments, the qualifying exam and the map being two of the objective-based measures, and they account for a larger portion of this. And then the teacher survey, which is equally important in the work that we're doing, that provides teachers' views of how students persevere through their mathematics and how they approach their mathematics. One thing that I should note, and this is part of an ongoing conversation as we're all learning and growing, is that the criteria was developed in a way to really place a premium on well-preparedness of students. We recognize, especially as the data from the field and a lot of the research from the field starts to emerge and as we transition to Common Core, that skipping entire year of content can be very detrimental to kids down the line. It might not necessarily surface itself in year one, but certainly when they get into Algebra I and geometry and later mathematics, sometimes those do start to creep up. And so in placing that premium on well-preparedness, it's important to note, Dr. Goran's earlier note, that the qualifying exam and the map were intended to measure the student's preparedness not only in the course that they're currently enrolled, but the course that they would skip, as we want students to be as successful as possible in the mathematics courses that they're placed in. This is a fifth grade example of the math placement decision matrix, and once again, this is all contextual pieces. But the idea of it is that we wanted -- students had to earn 60 points in order to be course-skip, essentially. And it takes a look at these three measures, and I'll draw your attention to the red rectangle. And essentially, these minimum threshold measures, 75% of points earned on the qualifying exam, 241 in the case of grade five for the map, and 30 on the teacher survey, was the minimum threshold that we developed for students' course skipping. And the idea behind that was to really think about the profile of a student that would be successful if they skipped a course. But part of the design in the math placement decision matrix was around flexibility. And so there's a sliding scale that allows for different combinations other than the minimum thresholds to be able to make the 60 points. And so I say all of that as a context to lead into the work from the original memo that was received on Friday, as well as a launching point into a conversation around the revisions that we made that are being presented today. So the first thing I want to talk about is a little bit of a deep dive into the student performance on map for students that were accelerated last year. And so while we recognize that this is a snapshot in time and not necessarily over the last five, six, seven years, it's something worth noting because it gives us a sense of how our current students are doing in acceleration. So to orient you to this, essentially what we're looking at is the four different paths or the four different ways that students are able to course skip. It takes a look at, for those accelerated students, their average map RIT score entering that course. It takes a look at their average exiting map RIT, which essentially was the spring map RIT from this year, what the average map RIT growth was, and the percent of those students that were accelerated that made expected gains. And what likely draws your attention is the yellow line with Math 5 skipping Math 6 and going into Math 7, and that the average accelerated student actually has a negative growth, which is really eye-opening, as well as the 13% of those students that are making expected gains. It's also important to note that, beside that line, that the other three lines really talk about average map RITs growth that is higher than the district average. So that's something that's important to note as well. But when we think about the profile of students skipping entire year's worth of mathematics learning, and we're seeing that 48% of students are making expected gains, which means that 52% are not, and then we look at the data from that perspective of how many -- what percentage of students are not making expected gains, it's just important to understand kind of the breadth of that moment and how this data informs the work that we do. So you may have picked up on your way in math placement data and the revision of what was originally in the note, and rather than look at what is essentially a very busy slide with a lot of data, I'd love to point your attention to the next slide, which essentially captures the original versus the revision. And so I'll take a moment here to orient you to the slide. So what this does is it takes a look at the original data as presented in the memo on Friday, and the conversation, as Paul had alluded to, the deeper dive that we spent a good chunk of the weekend doing, and trying to do a deeper dive to think about these numbers even more. And so what you're going to see in the red dashed lines is the average number of students that were course-skipped from 2009 to 2015 as a line of comparison. You'll also notice that the orange bars, or the yellow bars, depending on what angle you're looking at it, represents the original data that we shared on Friday, and then the blue represents the revision from this weekend and conversations this morning as well. I also want to parse them into two groups. I want to parse them into the group of Math 4 for a little bit of a conversation, and the group of Math 5, 6, 7 has a separate conversation. And the reason I'm doing that is because in Math 4, the criteria is slightly different than the Math 5, 6, and 7. And with Math 4, students had to score a spring map RIT on a number in operations of 241 to be eligible to take the qualifying exam. And if a student was eligible and took the qualifying exam, then they had to attain a score of 75% or higher to course skip Math 5 and place into Math 6. And then when we look at that data, 16 of the students actually made the bar, which favors or compares favorably with the historical average of 12 and actually is a little bit more. So we feel pretty strongly about and confidently about that figure. Now, talking about Math 5, 6, and 7 a little bit differently, the blue bars represent a change in our thinking. The initial data that we presented was essentially off of the math matrix that I explained earlier. But the idea, as Dr. Goran kind of alluded to in his conversation, was not necessarily to make a drastic change, but was rather to ascertain the well-preparedness of our students. But we also received anecdotally, you know, conversation and feedback from teachers in the field about the qualifying exam, and given that this is our first year in trying that, that there were a number of students that weren't able to complete the exam. And so as a way to level the playing field, we reduced the number of possible points by 12, and then weighed the data accordingly to come up with these new figures. And with the new placement data, you'll notice that for Math 6 and Math 7, that they either meet or exceed the historical average from 2009 to 2015, and that with Math 5, it's about 80% of the historical average. With the caveat of the yellow bar that we... With the caveat of the yellow bar that we represented earlier, thinking about the student performance from earlier, the fact that students in this category from last year only made 13% of expected gains. So we take that with great caution and feel very confident about the numbers where, where we landed. Finally, our next steps really consist of the same appeals process that we had discussed earlier. So the week, this week, after this meeting, you know, and tomorrow, I'll be working with Peter and his team to essentially create the process that allows for us to communicate with our parents around placement for their, their child. It will also include information about an appeals process that if a parent so chooses can retake the MAP and/or the qualifying exam, and that the better of the two scores, if they do take the, either retake, is used towards the mathematics placement decision to recalibrate. The deadline for parents making the appeals is June 18th, with the qualifying or MAP retake being the 24th or 27th. All that information will be in the placement letters, with the final placement being the week of July 13th. So ultimately, that represents our latest update on the math placement decisions. Barbara, Peter, do you have any additional words that you'd like to share?
Do you want to mention that these things, the invited retake?
Do you mind recapitating?
So.
Water from.
Yeah.
Water from.
So I think that, I think that covers all of our conversation. The only other highlight would be that the letters for the fifth grade families, which is the area where we have, the one grade level where we have fewer students than in the past, we were going to make a specific outreach to those students who made 12 or better on the survey and a 24 or better on the, the MAP, which basically means they met the criteria on those two components, and specifically invite them to come and retake the qualifying examination, with the thought being that we want to make sure that if a student, particularly in that grade level where we're falling below the historical average, if their family wants to retake it, we want to make sure that they take the opportunity to do so.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you for that overview. We really appreciate it. What we'd like to do at this point is invite anyone from the public who'd like to come and address the board to do so. Please state your name, come on up to the mic, and you'll have three minutes. And I don't think we have a sign for the one-minute warning, so we'll, we'll do a waving of the finger or something like that to let you know. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Claire Hiller. I'm a parent of two children in this district, and I've been teaching in the district for over 20 years. I'm currently a math teacher at Haven. I'm speaking on behalf of some members of the Math Acceleration Committee that worked this year to craft a proposal for appropriate placement for students. We represent each of the middle schools in grades V through 8. We know that you hear a great deal from parents about math acceleration, and we feel that it is important that you hear from some teachers as well. The middle school math teachers are not affected by the numbers of students placed in each class. We may teach more 7th grade classes one year and more algebra classes another year. We have no reason to want more students or less students placed in any particular class. We are not opposed to all acceleration. We are affected, however, when individual students are inappropriately placed. We are highly concerned when bright young students tell us they feel like failures. These are kids who start to lose their passion for math. These are kids who used to love math and begin to resist math. Once students are accelerated, it becomes very difficult for them to change their placement. We hear sometimes from the parents of former students that feel their child was accelerated too soon, and it catches up with them later in high school. Many of the students from our district who remain in grade level math throughout their time here enroll in Geometry as freshmen in high school. This is advanced. They are able to succeed in AP Calculus in high school. Over the years, teachers have become increasingly concerned about students who appear to be misplaced in advanced math classes. This year, a math acceleration committee was formed. We started the process by looking at the features and characteristics of students who seem to be appropriately placed. We identify the components that lead to long-term success in subsequent math classes. We work to determine the necessary knowledge and skills, the student approaches to learning, the motivation, and the willingness to persevere. The committee spent a considerable amount of time and effort engaging in rich discussions across schools and grade levels. The instruments, including the teacher survey and assessments that were used this year, reflect this process. We believe that all students need to engage in challenging mathematics, true problems, and what is referred to in math education as productive struggle. When students skip courses, they do not necessarily have the foundation they need for success, and their struggle can become unproductive. At the last board meeting, one of the school board members made a statement reminding everyone that we are all here for the same reason, the intention to do the right thing for kids. I am here on behalf of district math teachers to advocate for the right thing for kids in math. We're asking you to look beyond just the numbers of students and consider how individual kids feel when they are in over their heads. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Fontora. I'm a parent of a child at Nichols and two children at Lincoln. I appreciate the teachers' perspective, and I just had some concern looking at the handout from tonight and the previous handouts, that we're not closing the door entirely on course skipping, because there are students for whom course skipping is not only warranted, but it's, it's advantageous, and who, there are, I realize that this is the exception and not the rule, but I, I just want to make sure that we're leaving the door open for those exceptional students for whom course skipping is warranted and, and who succeed under a course skipping model. So that was my concern with this discussion, because it seemed like in tonight's handout that we are closing the door on course skipping. So I just wanted to make sure that it would still be available in the future to those students for whom it is warranted. And I, I don't know how you're going to go about defining that in the future, but it didn't seem clear to me from what we're talking about tonight, so that was my point.
Thank you. And Jess, I don't know if you want to just speak to that really briefly.
Yeah, I do. So you're absolutely right. We're not going to completely eliminate course skipping, in fact, and I didn't really drill into the note that we have here, but we recognize that there would be some outliers every now and then that really exhibit, you know, the kind of skill necessary and command of mathematics to skip a course. So that would not be completely eliminated.
And if I may, the original memo might have leaned more towards eliminating the opportunities for kids to skip, and the addendum actually opens up opportunities for, for children to skip.
Richard, can we clarify, like, so Paul, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So we can get this out here exactly?
Yep.
Because in the memo from Friday, it says, therefore, the 2015-16 school year, next school year, comma, will be the final year of acceleration as course skipping.
So think it's the difference between.
The compacting.
Compacting versus skipping.
Right.
So, so skipping, as it's known today, would go away after this coming year, replaced by.
It would, it would still be reserved for, you know, those exceptional cases.
Oh.
But in terms of the major scheme of what we do for 99.8% of our kids, it would be compaction and the regular course sequence.
Thank you.
Then could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Which is, if, the model that you developed for deciding who should skip this year, is that a useful tool for, in the future, to identify those outliers, those rare children who, it's fine to course skip?
Absolutely. I mean, it was designed in such a fashion to begin with.
To do that. Okay.
Is it fair to say that, I think we all agree, over the course of the spring, when we've talked about this a couple of times, that there'd be some deeper analysis, I know you presented.
Sure.
Some initial analysis, and I think we all agreed we wanted to look at it more over time and go deeper into the high school to really follow some of the children.
Yes.
And see how they've succeeded or run into challenges. But that statement that Jennifer read from the memo is really just the current thinking. It's, no decision has actually been made at this point for next year. Is that a fair statement?
A decision is.
I, I mean, for, that next year would be the last, next school year, according to the memo, would be the last year for course skipping, but I don't know that the board has approved that sort of change at this point.
I think with the, the policy and practice decision that was presented to the board was that over time, we would shift from a policy of acceleration meaning skipping to a policy of acceleration meaning compaction over time. And so the, the change was that that timeline for shifting to that research-based understanding has shifted, and we've given that more time, rather than making that move quicker, we're making that move a little bit slower, but that that is the direction that we would like to go in terms of how we provide students with accelerated options in mathematics.
And so is that going to come up under a policy committee meeting, under 6.280 eventually?
What is?
What's 6.280?
It's acceleration in our board policy.
Sure. It would, I mean, that's why, when I talked about board approval, it would, it would need to go through that.
Can I just ask, isn't that acceleration in skipping a grade, full grade of school as opposed to skipping a course?
Not entirely clear.
I think it is, but you're, you're right. Instead of a course, it's skipping a grade level, like fourth to fifth grade across the board.
Okay.
Well, I think what we have clear right now, and this is what the board certainly wanted, was to know for this coming school year, the, the numbers of students that qualified based on the criteria that relate forth and adjusted, is, you saw appropriate. And I think certainly here, I, Tracy's not here, but Tracy has shared her thoughts with me as well, and I think there is certainly an interest from the board to have clarity and to be able to approve whatever changes there may be in terms of any type of acceleration or, I say compression, but it's.
Compaction.
Compaction, sorry.
So I think we have to clarify that that's a board approval item. You know, we've talked about it, and, you know, is that, is that an appropriate board vote, like, as a vote would be to, to decide we're going to shift from skipping to compaction for, you know, for this timeframe, et cetera? This is kind of separate from the procedure of acceleration for now.
I think we have to look at that, and I'm not convinced that that's a board vote. The acceleration policy, as Barbara was suggesting, of skipping a grade is, but I'm not sure. It doesn't mean that we would, we would, we would have that conversation, and we can have that conversation again and again on, on the, and where we're going, but.
I think minimally, we could agree that the board would want to have that conversation before anything is changed and with enough advance notice so that any feedback from the board could be incorporated into the planning.
Sure.
And at that point, we could determine, you know, if a vote would be appropriate or not.
In fairness to the administration, I mean, the last time we talked about this, there was a significant discussion of the idea of compacting as opposed to skipping and doing that for 16, 17, and why that was appropriate based on the change to Common Core. I mean, I.
Yes.
We're talking about it like this is something we have, we did discuss it.
We did.
Pretty significantly.
I think, you know, there's general agreement, I think, that compaction is probably a better option, but there's, well, I'm, I'm interrupting the process that you outlined, Richard, and present. Get through the community conversation and then save our questions.
That's okay. But I do think, you know, when we hear something like 99.8% of acceleration will occur through compaction, you know, that's pretty significant, especially when we look at, you know, some of these numbers. It's a significant shift. So I think it's not.
I think we did discuss that last time, is that being the.
We did. But there was still an open question around what are the best practices on implementing compaction and.
No, and I think that's why.
And looking at grade by grade.
Termination's waiting here.
That's kind of the additional data, research that was going to happen, will happen.
Let's go back to the community.
Robert. Robert Lamb, I have a daughter, Bessie Rhodes, and a son that's going to move with Bessie Rhodes next year. I had comments about acceleration and compaction, but you guys have a lot to discuss on that. So I want to just touch on a couple of quick items. The first part was, I think Dr. Goran actually touched on it, was the differentiation. There was a discussion, differentiation is a great thing, and I believe that it is. We have an acceleration plan that's obviously still working the kinks out, but I think that a acceleration plan without a sister plan of differentiation does you no good. You have programs for kids that are struggling. You have these standard classes for everyone that is around median, and then you have the acceleration plan they were working out here for those that are exceptional, but what about everybody else? There's this gap that needs to be filled, and I don't feel like that's being addressed whatsoever. And it seems that, as a parent, I've just, just going through the process now, my daughter's in third grade, going to the fourth grade. We got her scores, we said, hey, we want to reconsider, and, you know, the question of, in third grade, you had to hit a 241, the same score you had to have to hit in fourth grade, and I believe in fifth grade too. So third, fourth, and fifth, you have to have a 241 RIT score to be jumped up or to be considered for, which, fine, you know, she didn't hit that, and we didn't realize that right away, but what happens now? She, she excels in math, she loves math, but there's no plan for her, there is no process. And I know that you look at the plan right now, it looks like it's up in the teacher's hands, the teacher is going to address that. Well, that's great if your teacher's good at that. And I'm not saying, you know, there are good teachers and bad teachers, but without having a formal plan on how that's to be accomplished, what the goals of that program are, you give nothing to the teachers, any resources for them to develop on, they're just left their own devices to figure it out for themselves. And some of them, maybe they find the right website, they find the right person to talk to, but if they don't have that information, how can they put together a program for my child or for another child that is, loves math and excels at it? And we don't get into a situation where she goes through, gets her math done, and 99% of the time would say, well, just go over there and read a book, because it took you three minutes to do the entire class, and just go sit and read a book, because we really have nothing else to give you. So I just, I look at and I think about the, this is the motto, every child, every day, whatever it takes. And it seems to me that in math, it's every child, every day, whatever it takes to get you to Common Core standard, which is also the state bare minimum. And to me, that isn't, that's not whatever it takes, that's not pushing my child, that's, I'm going to do what I can to get you to the minimum, then, kind of then you're on your own. It seems to be you should be challenging the child, you should be doing more to push the child accelerate, not accelerate the learning, if they have the capacity, push them, challenge them, don't just say, you're in the Common Core, congratulations, go read a book. To me, that's, that's not education, that's not what I'm sending my child to this school district to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paula Zalinski. I'm president of the District 65 Teachers Union, and I'm also a former eighth-grade math teacher, so I've actually come up with a comment, and I just have a question. So I was looking at these numbers, and I had a question about, so it's something about, like, only 60% of the kids are, what, what was that number? Only 60% of the kids are sort of successful in.
Meeting expected.
Meeting expected.
Yeah. And so I noticed that from 15, 16, the original number was, well, it was 87 in Math VII, and now it's 218. So, and it was, so what about, so what about those kids who are really struggling? Because that's what the teachers are saying, you know, what about those kids? I know people are very concerned about having their kids accelerated, but I think somebody needs to be saying, what about those kids? What about the kids who are being over-accelerated and are sort of being left, really struggling? And these are kids, I, I agree, that love math, and they, they sort of, you know, nobody talks about them. I had a question about the yellow. It says, this yellow block says, the qualifying exam scores were modified by reducing the number of points possible by 12. So my question, my question would be, why, why was it, why 12? Why not eight? Why not six? Like, why 12? Does anybody know?
Jess, if you, if you'd like to speak to the rationale, or anybody.
Yeah. So essentially, what we did is to take the reports from teachers about what they saw their students experience in their class, and looked at the total number of points possible. So 12 points was, depending on the grade level, roughly between a quarter and a third of the points. And so. And so it could have been nine, it could have been 13, but it was a number that seemed to reflect what we were hearing from teachers about the portion of the assessment that students weren't completing.
And we also wanted to be consistent, we also wanted to be consistent across the different grade levels so that we weren't doing-
Is that, that's correct. So people, so you're saying that people, teachers thought that, that what? That-
That the students were running out of time and taking the assessment.
Correct.
With a time test.
Right. Because sometimes when, you're right, because sometimes you, you're not really sure how to do the problem, so you run out of time. But, but again, why was it the 12? Because the teacher said?
So again, essentially what we were trying to do is take into account the fact that students were running out of time on the test. And Jess, I don't know if you want to say more about some of the things you heard, but we were choosing 12 because it was depending on the grade level between a quarter and a third of the points. And we wanted to pick something that was consistent and easy to explain across all three grade levels that had the reduction in the number of points possible.
So what you're saying is that students could have gotten 12 more points if they had been able to finish the test?
No, you don't know that. I mean, that's why I asked it.
No, we certainly don't know that, nor did we collect item level data to know which items did they miss versus which ones did we not. So in the absence of knowing that information, selecting 12 both accommodated the, what was reported to us, which is that folks were not, that some students were having a hard time finishing the test and gave students a benefit of the doubt on an assessment that had not been given at scale before. So anytime you give a new assessment, you're going to learn sort of what, what's working and what's not working about it. And given that we were in that learning process, we wanted to give students the benefit of the doubt in giving them the opportunity to take the accelerated course.
Is it your feeling that next year that you'd have to modify that qualifying exam and make it shorter or give more time for it?
Potentially.
Yes, potentially.
Right. And that's the piece that we were in is because this is the first year of implementation, we wanted to say that we want to have a system that works, we want to have a system that identifies students, and we wanted to have something that was consistent across the grades because over the past years, it's frankly been willy-nilly. It depends on what school you're in, depends on who's making the decision. So we've, we've been trying to do a consistent process, given the fact that this is a first year of execution of this sort of system and that we don't have two data points basically on this system, we made those adjustments.
Okay. Okay. I'll just throw on, I, I just, since the number seems to be getting higher, I just want you guys to think about what safeguards you have in place for the kids who are really struggling in these courses. Thanks.
The number relative to previous years is not getting higher. So just to clarify, you're, you're saying from the original report?
Well, but if you follow the trend, I mean, I would say the teachers didn't, don't just notice this happening now. I'd say we've noticed it over time that, that more and more kids are struggling sometimes in these classes. So if you look at from, even from 2009, 2010, 95 to 218, that, that, that's a, that's a big jump.
That's a big jump. 218 more, or 218 total students will be included, would be accelerated.
Because of the, the school.
Because of this. And it's never been more than, the highest number was 179, so I think that's a-
No, 185.
185.
185.
Sure.
Last year. But I was looking back to.
I just have to say that, you know, with all due respect to sort of moving towards consistency here, somehow over the weekend, you've added another arbitrary component. And it's in response to the fact that three different members of the board on April 27 said that they didn't want to see a dramatic shift or swing in how this program was operating without good data. And I think there are a lot of questions here about what, what evidence you have to back up some of these assertions. Now, I completely, you know, trust and believe teachers that get up here and say that some students that get accelerated are not doing well, but, you know, I know, I, what information I asked for before this meeting and I'd like to see grades, not just math scores, but the grades for students. And to Paula's point, and I think other people have commented about this in other settings and meetings about acceleration, is what do you do, what do you course correct? I also think that there is, there's no exit survey for students at the end of an accelerated course. We probably should be asking some students how they felt they did, not just looking at the math scores and the grades, but did they feel confident in math? Did they feel like they were challenged or do they feel like they need some help? They probably have the best sense, and I see some teachers nodding their heads, that of, of what their own efficacy is. So-
I think that's a fair point.
I don't know why we didn't stand by what we had on Friday.
I was going to save this, but I do think, you know, teachers and parents, I think, have reached out to administrators and board members. I think some people are really behind some of the proposed changes in terms of reducing some of the course skipping. Some people, you know, are really supporting it. But I think as really clear is your point about data, Jennifer, and that is, we don't really have data. We have a lot of anecdotes right now and we can't, as a board, what I heard this spring was, we didn't want to make a significant shift that wasn't based on data. And we've seen a slice of that, which is a really good start. You've talked about some other types of data. I think we also know we want to look at it over a longer period of time. And so I, I think that's what we need to do. And so we've talked about that a couple of times, it's not anything new, but I just wanted to, to reiterate that.
Can I just jump into though with one thing that I know that there were board members who were asking specifically for not seeing a change in the numbers, which is why we have, you know, the whole 12-point thing. But I, what we missed on that is that there have been changes in the way math is delivered with Common Core instruction. So we're making an assumption that because we don't have the data, that the number shouldn't change, but the thing is, instruction has changed. So maybe it is appropriate for the numbers to change. We're making an assumption that they should stay where they are and that, from what we're hearing, in the absence of data, I don't know what we use other than anecdotal evidence from our teachers that this isn't working for a lot of the students who are being skipped. So I, I question our, this idea that we have to make sure the numbers stay the same for next year when we may be doing damage to students who are being accelerated inappropriately by lowering by a quarter or a third the qualifying exam score. And to me, that is a lot, a huge difference in the, in the, you know, to say because they couldn't complete the exam. Well, maybe they couldn't complete the exam because they didn't have the proper mastery of the material. So I think we have a misplaced desire to keep that number similar.
I think short of, it's true, there, we have been talking about conceptual gaps or heard about conceptual gaps and potentially gaps that show up later or gaps of struggling. I don't necessarily need, you know, 10 years of longitudinal data, but it would be very useful to understand what are the types of gaps that we're seeing? When are we seeing it? Are we seeing it in specific grades? Because it looks like here, you know, there's at least some pointer to the skipping sixth grade, which I, I think, I don't trust one single math score. There's a lot of volatility around maps as well as the fact, you know, we could go on for a while, that, of what gains happen when you are at that highest level. Gains are much less when you're at the 90th percentile, just by definition. So it's, you're not going to see the same number of kids typically meeting those expected gains as you would the average. So I think us comparing us to the, so, you know, comparing to the average, it's already in, except in three cases out of four, you, we have the average math score, it's a 75th percentile, the average math gain was 42%, I believe, based on the accountability report. All three of those categories are surpassing that considerably, with the exception of that sixth grade. So that's something we got to look at, right? Like, so I, I'm not asking for huge amount on a tunnel day, but I do, I do think it's fair to understand what are the gaps beyond the concerns of we have struggling students? What are the gaps? And are there specific gaps when kids, kids are doing acceleration at certain times? Because that can point to, then you can have more of a directional kind of approach to where might you lower relative to what we do today? So I think that is a step forward that doesn't require years of data collection. It would be very helpful because it is anecdotal and you could stack up just as many parents and students to say, you know, my kid did really great when they were accelerated and I, I really don't hear from, and there's probably a reason why. We do not hear from parents typically whose child maybe should have been pulled back. And there's going to be type two, you know, there's going to be mistakes in this process. It's, we just have to be clear about, A, can we unravel those? You know, what, where do we want to err on? Do we want to ultimately err on not giving as many children an opportunity? Or do we want to err on giving some more children opportunity and then potentially trying to back off? I think, you know, for me philosophically, I'd err on the left side, although it sounds like it's difficult to back off. So maybe there's a way that we can, we can deal with that.
Can I, can I rip off, I mean, off of Candace's point on this? And that's that, one of the things that was disappointing for me sitting there on April 27th and sitting here now in, was Katie Bailey, one of the first questions in the discussion on the 27th was, what are the best practices? What do we know about the best practices in compacting? Do we actually know that compacting six, seven is better? Montgomery County compacts four, five, right? And then they, they give full due to six, seventh and algebra in middle school and don't do any kind of acceleration or compacting. So it's, it's this question of erring on the side of giving kids a chance, giving kids who are motivated and, and can rise to the occasion and have the aptitude and the will to do this, but figuring out like what homework's been done on best practices about when to compact, how to compact, all those things.
And just to summarize, I think a lot of what people are saying is this deeper analysis that we've talked about. I think we recognize, we don't have that now. I think we recognize, and I saw some of the teachers nodding as well, that we all want to get there so that we know we're making the best choices for each individual child. And I think that's part of what the board has set out as an expectation as we head into next year, that we would get that information from the administration to see best practices, a, a deeper analysis of what is working, what may not be working in terms of course skipping and how compacting actually could work in the district.
And in fairness, there's what's realistic to do in the timeframe you had to do it. Because what you're calling for, I think, is essential. But that takes a little bit more time, but to work out a standardized process for deciding who should be accelerated and who shouldn't, that's a one-year-long thing. I, even that, that's, it looks to me like it took a tremendous amount of work. And I think it's a good benefit because it's given us some information that we really need. I mean, parents now kind of know if their kid didn't pass the original and they, you know, and they, they come in under the new, say, lower standard, that they're taking a little bit of a risk there, which, you know.
Sure. But I don't understand the wisdom of creating a system when you're not going to use it next year, unless this is a full overlay. Right. If you use it as is for compacting, I guess that's a question.
Well, we let her.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me just, Paul's been wanting to say something. Let's, Paul and then you, how's that?
This is a great conversation and it's really an important one. And indeed, I just want to underscore, Claudia, you sort of hinted on this, the, the, there's an important amount of time to do a deep dive into what we're doing for next year and that's what we've presented over the weekend and that's where we worked over the weekend. There's also conversations that we have to have and deeper dives on, Jennifer, I really appreciate the, the idea of doing a survey and to really get some, some data that we can have makes sense and, and how we actually do that. The opportunity, as Robert put on the table from the community, on really defining differentiation is something that we're hungry for and our colleagues who are teachers are really hungry for. And finding the time to do all of the above is, is where we're squeezed.
Oh, go ahead, Barb.
I just want to emphasize, I think the real struggle that everyone is having with all of this is not catching the children in the middle while we're having these discussions. I think the concern is that if we in fact accelerate kids who are not quite ready, how do we pull them back if they're failing? What kind of thing happens to students who fall in that category? So that's what we're all wrestling with, is what's really best for kids at the moment. The, the idea of compacting, we've begun conversations, the reason we haven't done it yet is it takes a lot of work to figure out what is the best, what are the best grades to do and so forth. But I, I think our concern again, and everybody has shared this from the board to the, to the staff, is how do we make these really, really good decisions from, from year to year without catching the children in the middle and do them right? And that, I think we need to keep that focused.
We've considered as well to include in the letter to families that there be a point of evaluation where the teacher and the family can sit down and look at how the young person is doing six weeks in, eight weeks into the course. Now, that causes all sorts of complications on shifting schedules, et cetera. I recognize that. But where's the, where's the check for the teacher to have an honest conversation with the family and the child, if, if the kid especially isn't doing well?
Oh, Susan.
Well, I'm sorry. Do you mind if I just say one more point along this line? I, you know, it is true that all of these things take time and we've spent the better part of a year or more dealing with the issue of acceleration, which affects a very small percentage of students. Next year, I anticipate that, given the course of how we've been talking, we're going to be talking about how to compact courses, which will impact maybe a slightly higher number of students, but still a small segment of the population. And in the meantime, the 60% of students who aren't meeting college and career readiness standards, I'm not sure, I haven't heard a plan of what we're going to do to address that population and how we're going to make sure that those students who are in their appropriate classrooms are going to succeed and thrive and, and raise up those scores. So all these things take time, but, and so it, it should be our job to figure out how to allocate that time correctly and to benefit the greatest number of students. And I'm not meaning to say that identifying students who should be accelerated isn't important, but it should be a small number. And I think we're just, I've said it before and I'll say it again, we are going in the, we're focusing in the wrong direction by trying to increase the numbers of students who are accelerated. What I wish we would have been spending all of our time and efforts on is figuring out, recognizing that there is a big spread in where student readiness is. How could we work within the classroom structure to figure out, giving our teachers the tools to differentiate, to, to do what we needed to do, increasing, you know, coaching or, whatever, the math specialist, whatever we need to do, deploying those better so that within the classroom, there was better instruction for more students instead of the parents and, and students or whoever feeling like the only option for getting the kind of instruction they want is course skipping or acceleration or whatever it is. So I, I feel like we have really misplaced the focus of the conversation for really the last, certainly a year longer than that. And I'm afraid that next year, we're going to continue not to really have the conversation and the right focus.
I just need a factual correction because this revision, or the latest we've seen here, is not increasing the numbers of students who would be accelerated relative to, it's actually decreasing it from 2014, 15. The only category it increases is not a skipping category. So the grid's kind of a little bit misleading in that Math 7, Math 8 is not-
Doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, right? This is a placement. For seventh graders, they're going to go one of two places. They're either going to go in Algebra 1 or Algebra 8. Their level, you know, you can go back to separate discussions on that and whether it's the way we want it. But the reality is, you know, we have on the table, separate from this, a discussion about the Algebra Pilot, which means to collapse those two classes. Makes sense to me that we would move in that direction by adding more kids into Algebra 1. That is not a skipping scenario. That is an actual, that's just an allocation of how many kids go to Algebra 1 or Algebra 8. So relative to our acceleration, these revised numbers are in fact less than last year, but are on par with, you know, over the last several years. So just want to make sure.
But from Friday to today, our focus was raising up those numbers so that they're more in line with what we've seen in the past. All I'm saying is our focus has been in the, I believe, has been in the wrong place. We could have affected and, and affected math instruction for a greater number of students in a positive way, were we not so focused on this acceleration piece and that.
And I think that the whole board is committed to looking at how kids at all levels can succeed. I think you're right, we were responsive to what parents and what we heard from teachers in terms of a lack of clarity, a lack of transparency, a lack of consistency. in terms of a lack of clarity, a lack of transparency, a lack of consistency around the process that had existed for years. And so we as a board said, yeah, we need to address that because it was problematic. And it doesn't mean that we don't also address the other issues, but it was an area that we were called on to, to really pay attention to. And so I think the board was responsive and transparent that way.
But we've both been called on to focus on how are we making sure that differentiation within the classroom is working? And we have, we've, we chose to focus on this one piece of what parents were, were concerned about.
But couldn't we, on the next, there's a math, like, on the board calendar, couldn't we make that?
When is the math update scheduled?
It's in October.
So in October, that should be part of the, the update.
Can't we, can't we say that?
I would love to commit to right now.
We can say that, but I mean, this is a question of work plans relative to the strategic plan, and a differentiation is embedded in that certainly, but, but I don't think we can dictate that there's going to be a differentiation plan for math by October. I mean, I think that's something that.
Or at least the beginning of the conversation? At least perhaps a beginning of a conversation?
Well, I think what we should, what we should do is look, because we know that this summer, the work plans are being built out. So in August, we should have a better sense of when the timing for that is going to be, right?
But if you don't put a flag in the sand.
But I think they will be.
Susan's question is, when will it ever happen?
But I, but I think what we're saying is, the work plan will put the flag in the sand.
Okay.
And the work plan is being developed across all the areas of the strategic plan by August. So at that point, we should have a flag in the sand.
But we, we then, I would love to reserve the right to say, here's what we can do and here's what we can't do, so that if we really are going to go deep into issues around differentiation, that means that a lion's share of time that we're spending on other things, we have to devote elsewhere, because we just, we have one Jess and a fantastic group of volunteer committee members who've come to play over the year. And so we've got to, we've got to leverage our own timing on this as well.
And let's go to the most patient member ever to speak.
I need more time though, because I have to, on, on the fly, change my comments.
I'm sorry, but you do have three.
You got the implication there, thank you. So I'm Steve Jones, I'm a parent of two children at Lincoln. And, and so this, this is somewhat more impromptu than I had actually planned as a result of what you were saying, and I appreciate the discussion. It's a great discussion, and it's also incredibly problematic that you're having this discussion, and we're dealing with a couple to a few hundred kids, right, whose lives are affected by decisions that are now being made in, in a few months' time, based on numbers, on tests that you yourselves have said are in some ways problematic. Teachers have said some of these kids are struggling. What are we doing to support these kids? I mean, what is it that we can do not to decelerate? And I've taught, I, I teach communication and computer science at UIC, so I've pulled some of my colleagues in math and math education. And their take was that acceleration actually works really well, and most school districts need to be increasing it, and we seem to be decelerating. So what are those school districts to do that were not? What's happening that they're supporting the kids who are struggling? What can we do other than differentiation for our high achievers? Because differentiation, particularly when we're dealing with enrollment issues, at least at Lincoln, and I know at some other schools too, differentiation is going to be incredibly difficult for our teachers. And they, they have enough to struggle with, simply given the class size that they have. So when, when we say, well, you know, we're going to back off and not accelerate, what are we going to do with those kids who are even not in the middle, but somewhere between the middle and, and higher? How are we going to keep them from getting bored and losing interest in math and potentially other STEM-related fields? So I, I saw your signal, I'm leaving it at that, because this is, I, I'm concerned that we're having discussion here and doing things on the fly that seems willy-nilly to me, in, simply in a different way than what we had as a previous process. Thanks.
I'm Tomasz Selch, also a parent at Lincoln and Nichols too. And I think most of what I wanted to say has been already echoed by different parents and also by some members of the board. But I am very concerned about both the acceleration and differentiation we're seeing in the district. Acceleration on one hand is something we can't stop, we, we should not stop, it's something that needs to continue, and there are children who definitely need it and crave it because they have a much higher math level and it's the only way to keep them challenged. The question is, what are we doing for the kids who are not there yet? We talk a lot about differentiation, but honestly, especially in the elementary schools, we're not really seeing that differentiation. Programs like Everyday Math, which is our math curriculum, would help with the differentiation because of the spiraling, but again, we're not really seeing that in the classroom. We're looking at one number for math testing for the fourth graders who may be allowed to skip to math six. We're looking at one sub-score of math, 241, which is pretty much the 99th percentile or at least the 95th percentile of where these kids are. But what are we doing for those who are say, between the 80th and the 95th percentile? What, those kids who are scoring somewhere between 230 to 241 in the RIT, in the RIT numbers category? These kids are getting bored, these kids are not getting challenged, and then on the other hand, we have a lot of children who are not there, not anywhere near this yet, and the question is, what are we doing for them? I understand the district right now has huge financial difficulties. We are letting people go, especially reading specialists. We haven't had really math specialists, but this is something that we really need to consider. Math, math specialists in the schools who will help, especially those who really need that help, but will also help teachers develop a differentiation within the existing curriculum, therefore providing a challenge to every child in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Well, we kind of blended the board conversation with the comments from the public. Does anyone else have anything else to share?
I'll just say, Richard. So first, thank you guys for putting it together. I guess my question revolves around the process that you put in place, because you seem to be sort of taking a step back from your own process. And that's because when I see the additional 200, I just look at math seven, so the additional 218 kids, isn't, I thought your process allowed them to appeal or their parents to appeal? When, when those 131 kids, would they have the right to appeal?
Yes, in the original set, yes. And they, and they still do even beyond that, so.
They would have pulled it out, they're, so I guess, here's, here's my question. So for the board, are we, are we supposed to go with the revised version or the original version? And then what are we supposed to, what is the board action on this?
There is no board action, it is board discussion tonight, and the new proposal from the administration is the revised column highlighted in green and yellow.
I'm presenting the revised column, and what we're arguing is that as we move forward, we will send letters out to the, the families and the kids who actually qualified, qualified originally, we will send letters out and say that you've been, you've been accelerated. For the other families, we'll say you've been accelerated, but you can opt out if you want to as well, we're going to leave that option open. And we're going to suggest that we have some sort of review, teacher and student, or teacher and parent at least, to make sure that the fit is right.
Any, Jennifer?
I just have a plea for our own sanity, getting materials like this ourselves on Friday evening and at 3:30, I think, this afternoon, with many questions about how is this information collected and quantified? How are you drawing, you know, drawing conclusions from a single data point, i.e. the, the decrease in the math score where we don't even know what the range was and perhaps that decrease is one point off? I mean, there, there are so many pieces of this analysis that are, with all due respect, I know you spent a lot of time on it, but are not adequate for our decision-making.
And you know what I think, just building off of that, as we do look for further conversation on this, it probably would be helpful to just clarify what data points the board may expect as we go to make some sort of decision on this going forward. I know there are a few different points of view, both on the, the time period to look at and the types of data points, I think we've heard some of those tonight.
May I just respectfully disagree with the last comment, Jennifer, and I apologize, but I feel like the analysis that has been done in preparation for the board is far and above what I have seen before, and I think what the board has seen before. And we're working on developing a process, developing the data set. So I would just disagree, and I'm, I'm proud of Jess and the work that he's done, and I'm thankful for Peter and the work that he's done, to prepare as much analysis has been provided to the board.
Let me also say that some of this is around the timing that we did with the tests, the bringing together of the data around the test, the working together back and forth with the committee, who again has spent volunteer time, really working hard. And so some of the constraint set to get to, information that can make a decision-maker very clear, is a, is a timing squeeze that we entered into as we, as we did these tests this year. And we can, we improve that process over next year? Sure, we can do the timing in different ways. But in this particular case, there is a lot of, and, and as John said respectfully, there's a lot of midnight hours that have been put into this. And is, is this our best work based on the midnight hours? Yes. Is this our best work that can absolutely be done in the, in the great analytic world? No, but we have to, we have to respond to what we have and we have to move forward.
And I'll just summarize as we wrap this topic up, that I think it's about alignment of expectations. So I think there may be some on the board that have expectations that are reasonable from their perspective and perhaps, you know, more broadly across the board, in terms of what might be necessary to, to move this topic forward. Those expectations might be different than certainly we've had in the past. I'm not sure that comparing to what we've had in the past is necessarily a very good benchmark, but certainly we want to make sure that everyone's aligned on expectations so that whatever your team is looking to execute matches what you expect and what the board expects, and I think we can get there.
May I also though, absolutely encourage both board members individually and community members, please, that if there are individual or, that there are data points that we should be collecting, so I really, I'm responding to the survey, I think it's a fantastic idea. If there are other ways for us to gather data, even if it's anecdotal, but it can tell a story that we can be articulate about before, before the public forum, please give us advice. We're listening and we're, and we're willing to adapt as, as we adapted over the weekend. And I think we need to, again, continue to learn as we move forward and as we move forward in the implementation of the Common Course Eight standards. Robert, you and I may disagree, and we can talk about this offline, but I think the Common Course Eight standards are a high bar and, and actually are pushing our, our faculty and our teachers to really teach in a really interesting and different ways, and we have to pay attention to that as we move forward, so.
All right.
I actually, just one more question about, because the maps, this whole thing on page 81 about the math scores, I am still just trying to get my head around what this means and, and all of that. When we're talking about, so for, in, somebody who's in math four, who's skipping math five and went on to math six. So in 1314, they were taking the math four.
Wow.
The, the, the math test that they took was the math, you know, was their fourth-grade math, math test, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so then the 1415, they're taking a sixth-grade level math test.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I mean, I think it is hard to say.
They're taking a, they, they take the test.
They take it with their grade level.
They still take it with their grade though, so they're not.
They take it with their grade level and the test is adaptive in nature.
Right.
Right. So I.
The test remembers what you got last time and then starts you there, and then as you progress, if you get questions right, it increases the level that you're being tested at.
Right, no, I understand that about, so I guess.
It's not a different test.
No, I understand.
Or it's individualized for everybody.
So I guess what I'm saying is, if you have skipped a grade, if you've skipped a fifth grade of math or a math six, and so you're starting from the last point of your math test, and theoretically they're asking you questions about fifth grade math then, which theoretically you should be just pacing.
Right.
And so we're saying only 48% are making accepted gains, and that actually is.
Right.
Fairly concerning. But they're saying that maybe there's not the math mastery of that.
You know, what I want to do actually at this point is, this, this requires, in my view, and I think the view of others, much more data to really look at and understand the range and looking at something beyond just a single data point before we draw a conclusion.
Well, no, but I'm not asking for more data, I'm asking to understand what this data is and what it represents. And so that's what I'm trying to figure out, what is it?
If we could have a short answer, that would be great.
So essentially what it means is, you're looking at those students who took the pre-test in fourth grade and took a post-test in fifth grade, and you're, if you're looking at the expected gains measure from spring to spring, you're looking at what percentage of the students made a gain that was at least as big as the average student in the same grade level from fourth to fifth grade in the national sample, and that that amount of gain is bigger than the error in each of the two tests put together.
Because there's a standard error on every score.
Right, no, 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 I get that.
And the higher the grade.
But it is important to say that the district's own average of expected gains is 45%, it's in the middle.
And 42% for 75th percentile and above.
That's you.
Which, all these students are above that. So it goes down as, it goes down, it trends downward as the, as you go higher.
Because it's hard to make those gains.
It's hard to make those gains. And as kids get older, the, the expected gain is smaller, the standard of error sometimes exceeds the actual expected gain as you get higher.
The errors, the errors, the problem, it's not that it's harder to make the gain because you're still comparing to other students starting at a similar place. So the average for a high-performing student might be two or three points gain, as opposed to maybe seven or 10 points for a lower-performing student. So that's held constant so that it's a fair comparison. The problem is that the error, more students fall within the error band at the high end.
Can we, is it okay if we wrap this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just looking at the clock and being aware of everybody's hours that they've already put in today. Thank you for coming to share with us tonight. Let's go on to item number six, and we'll try and manage this in a little bit more streamlined fashion. If we could have an update from the administration on innovations for learning, and we'll start there.
So I'm going to turn it over to John. After our good discussion last week, we went out to the three schools where the pilot was offered and got information and feedback from the teachers who are offering, who we were offering the pilot to. And John can report back on, on what we've learned and how we'd like to proceed.
Sure, so I went out and had meetings at, at King on Wednesday, and then at Walker on Friday, and then was at Oakden this morning to answer questions. And focused with teachers around answering questions and having a conversation around what implementation would look like, what expectations are, in use of this tool that is intended to be a tool to support differentiation and personalization in the curriculum. And so for each school, as I mentioned in my brief memo to you, we recorded questions, we recorded responses, that document was shared with all of the teachers in the K-1 band, including ESL teachers and special education teachers, so people could continue to interact, ask additional questions, write additional comments beyond the 45 minutes or hour that I spent there at the school. And so based on those conversations, school teams gathered and are gathering to decide whether or not they would like to continue and pursue the pilot that's been offered to the schools. And so where we're at right now is that at King Arts, both teams, kindergarten and first grade, are very interested in, in continuing on with the pilot, and so we look forward to fully implementing the pilot in both grade levels there. At Walker, one of the teams is, is ready to commit and is ready to move forward, the other team has a couple of more questions and is still trying to talk about that, and I expect a response from them by the end of the week. And then while we were sitting here tonight, we all received an email from several of the teachers at Oakden, and they took a poll today where the results are a little bit more, a little bit more mixed in terms of one teacher at one grade level, another teacher at another grade level. And so I think especially with one teacher still to be hired, a new principal who we've just hired, we have to look really carefully and see whether it makes sense to continue in the pilot at that school for next year.
So as I listen to that, we would move forward at King with teams, we would move forward with 18 potentially at Walker, and we would most probably.
18 and potentially both.
Right, and, and, and potentially at Oakden. And potentially at Oakden, we wouldn't move forward.
Right. I think that's the decision that needs to be made after having a chance to dive in and digest a little bit more what's been shared tonight. So I think the meetings and the conversations went very, very well. I think the response from the teachers was very positive. Teachers were prepared, they had many questions, they asked a lot of clarifying questions, really trying to think about how would this work in my classroom? How can I take, use this tool for best advantage? And I think really one of the key questions were, can I make this work in my classroom for my kids or is there some prescribed model that I will have to implement and follow to a T? And so we really talked through the flexibility and the different options for adjusting and using the tool to meet kids' needs.
Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Is there anyone from the community that would like to share your thoughts with us? Just remember to state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Stephanie Kimmel. I'm a parent at Walker Elementary School. And I think, I just wanted to, I spoke last week and I appreciate that you reported back on the meetings with the teachers. I do still have some other concerns and I know Tracy summarized them pretty well at the end of the last meeting, but I think there's still some concerns that I have about whether or not there are other options assessed for this new intervention. Also, speaking with my son's first grade teacher last week, I think I have a real concern that this was only introduced to her as there would be new iPads in her classroom, not what the content of this intervention is. I think it's really troubling that we haven't actually seen what this is. I did watch, there's two YouTube videos that are more like advertisements for this intervention program. To me, not as an educator, but as a parent, it looks like kids are sitting with headphones on, passively looking at something on a screen. This is not what I expect from District 65 or the quality of teachers and the differentiation that I have already seen in the first grade class. I still think we have not heard anything about how this will be evaluated and I think especially in light of if teachers are going to have their choice, if they do it or not or how often, that there's no way we can tell if it is helping any set of kids in that way. If it's not consistently applied, I don't know what the methodology could possibly be that we could assess if it was helpful or not. I also continue to have concerns about just the offer of a gift to our district. Sounds great on the surface, but what, who is this organization? Who are these, who developed this content? This organization is run by an attorney, a retired attorney, who has highly paid software developers and development professionals on their staff and clearly, and no educators mentioned. I also would like to hear some clarity around how the layoffs of the reading specialists in the district are impacting these three schools specifically. I understand at Walker that there is no position that's been eliminated, but potentially one or the two specialists could be farmed out to other schools and I want to know how this intersects with that issue as well. I think that we deserve more answers to the process questions that were raised last week as well and whether or not this is viable going forward beyond this first year of a gift. Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm wondering, does anyone want to address any of the points that she raised? I'm thinking the administration, I mean unless the board has anything they'd like to say.
I can't address them, but I mirror my questions for tonight.
Okay.
We move forward to engage the members of the three schools to see the degree to which they were engaged in this process, so that stage, that was one response that we had. In terms of the organization, yes, it's a retired attorney. He does have professional developers on his staff who are longtime educators. He had a national advisory board to which I served on with several outstanding educators, including former superintendent of the high school, District 202. And so there's a wee bit more gravitas to the organization than might be portrayed by its website or by the gentleman who created it. And we see it as an opportunity to use something in our classrooms. And again, the linkages specifically to the reading specialists, this is not a strategy to replace reading specialists.
You know what I want to do, just for the community, I want to try and go through all of the community speakers this time and then we'll have all of our comments. I didn't do a good job last time.
All right.
Hello. It sounds as though you are about to address some of the concerns that we are bringing forward. My name is Kathleen Glynn and I am the parent of two students at Oakden who you've probably seen are up well past their bedtime time at this point. But I stayed here tonight because I spent a fair amount of time on the website of innovations for learning this weekend and there were any number of things that I saw that gave me cause for concern. The primary thing was that as you go to the first page for TeacherMate, one of the headlines is "Technology Solutions for the 30-to-1 Ratio." That says one thing to me, folks, outsourcing. I do not want my children's education outsourced to people at a remote site through headphones that they interact with through an iPad. That is not the standard of teaching that I'm looking for in District 65. On their website, they also stated as one of their success stories that there was a 13-point test score gain in the schools in the District of Columbia. Over the last 25 years, I've spent 11 of those years living in the Washington metropolitan area and I am well aware of what's going on in the DC public school system. We did not choose to live in the District of Columbia at the time that we had a child who would have been attending the public school. We moved to Virginia. This is a school system that is grasping at straws and they have no place to go but up with their statistics. A 13-point gain is not a victory. This is not where District 65 is. We have many talented and gifted teachers. My kindergartner, who is now playing on my iPhone out in the hallway, entered kindergarten this year able to read well above grade level. She was placed in Mr. Daniels' kindergarten at Oakden, where through his expertise, he not only continued to accelerate her level of reading, but he has her writing stories that are four or five paragraphs long with correct capitalization, punctuation, grammar, and we can have a conversation with her about storyline. This is what being in the classroom with the teacher does. You cannot get that through an iPad. The last thing that I have to tell you is if this comes into her classroom, she will not be participating in part testing or any variation of going forward. I will not give you her test score to bolster the statistics of outsourcing her education. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. I'm Paula Zalinski. I'm president of the District 65 Educators Council. I just wanted to follow up, because I was actually out of the room. What was said about the, my understanding is that two of the three schools responded to an invitation to meet. Am I correct that both teams at King Arts are interested in one at Walker? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, and I think what I would like to see and I think what the teachers would like to see is some of the things that were discussed this week in these meetings just put to paper. So the fact that it's, you know, flexible, right? Teachers, my understanding is that if they want to pull out at some point, after a few months maybe if it's not working, they're not liking it. So I would just like to see these things in writing.
So that's the purpose of the Google Doc and the Google Doc that I shared with you today.
Yeah.
So you can print it out. But that's, it's in writing, it's in the Google Doc and that was one of the purposes of having that shared document so that that would be.
And was that, that was shared with all three, every, all the teachers at the three buildings?
Each school started their own set of questions with the answers there.
Okay. Because I saw, the one I saw said King Arts, so I wasn't sure if it was for all the buildings. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I just want to say, we're, and any research that you're able to come up with, because I keep hearing that from teachers, that they are looking for research that supports this and it makes them more comfortable moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Sullivan Dunbar and I, my kids are beyond this program. They're in fourth and, well, going into fourth and seventh at Washington and Nichols. But I have seen a question raised a lot in discussions around this that I haven't heard yet, so I thought I would bring it, which is, it sounds like this program is going to be used for kindergarten and first grade, but the website makes it sound like it's oriented towards first grade. So my question is why kindergarten, especially given the concerns that we're hearing a lot about kindergarten getting overly academic, more and more academic, basically.
Would anyone, John or Paul, if you'd like to speak to that?
There's a couple of questions. I think in terms of the, how the program has been assessed and what other programs we've looked at, this is a program that I've used personally and I have personal experience with, not only working with the program in classrooms, in 25 classrooms, but also working closely with the company, working with the CEO, and have experienced this company to be incredibly supportive and really interested in one thing, which is in working with students and supporting students' success. So there's the, there's the tools that they have and then there's the life of the company and how they support schools that I have found to be incredibly impressive and fortunately not completely unique, but unusual in the education space. In terms of the impact on the specialists, this program has no impact on the specialists whatsoever and no impact on the decision making around the specialists, the reading specialists. This is a tier one or general education classroom tool. This is not an intervention or a tier two or a tier three tool, so it exists in a different part of the curriculum completely. In regards to the solutions for the 30-to-1, this is not, this is not outsourcing, this is providing rather, I think, teachers with tools to continue to do strategies that we see in classrooms across the district every day, which is teachers meeting with individuals or small groups of students while other groups of students work independently around the classroom. And so the TeacherMate program fits exactly into that paradigm of in order to support teacher differentiation, if I'm going to meet with one group of students, the rest of the groups of students need to be doing something else that they can participate in independently and is beneficial. So this supports and lives in that same paradigm of how we work with groups of students and rotate through students that I can meet with individuals and meet their individual need or needs that three students have in common while the rest of the classroom is engaged in other practice and reading activities. I think in terms of the K-1 aspect, the target of the program is really on early readers and scaffolding early readers to build early literacy skills, what the Common Core refers to as foundational skills, so that as they prepare and as they move up in levels and stages, they are getting constant teacher feedback and teacher support and that they're being assessed as they move along in a formative way so that when they're ready for additional challenge, they receive additional challenge. Where we see a lot of our students that are ready for the support, it's in kindergarten and first grade. In a different district, we use this quite a bit in first grade and frankly into second grade as well, where students continue to need this level of support where, you know, at this band of reading level, which on a fountain and panel reading level is from pre-readers or a Level A all the way up to a Level I, which is set at the end of first grade. So I just note that the current District 65 expectations for where students should be at the end of kindergarten, at the end of first grade are perfectly aligned with the expectations that TeacherMate has as well, and those expectations are not changing. There's an expectation that students by the end of kindergarten get to about a Level D and that students by the end of first grade get to a Level I. Again, those expectations are the same for TeacherMate. So those expectations are not, are not changing.
Two other things, that we are not going to be executing the TutorMate part of this, which would be the connection to the mentor at another end of the line. So that's not going to be part of the process. And then in terms of evaluating, I think part of the evaluation is really truly, as we were talking tonight about the work on mathematics, is to trust the instincts of the teachers who are implementing it so that that would be a key core of that, which is how it's used in the classroom, how effective is it, et cetera. The second piece would be, how do we find the data? That's going to be a harder task to figure out what the starting point and the ending point is. We can do some work on that, but I think the intuition of the teachers who will evaluate based on their use in the classroom is going to be really important.
All right. Board members, any questions or comments? Go for it.
Just two things I think might help. One is that there's, there have been repeated requests for what else did you look at? And maybe you didn't because you know this program and you think it's a good one, but maybe it would be a good idea and reassuring to many of us to see what else is out there, you know, make some kind of grid, say these are the things that are available on the market and maybe what we'd find out is that they're all pretty much the same or maybe we'd find out something different. But I think it's a little worrisome when we don't think it was chosen as the best of the lot, but rather something that was known, although it might be very good. The other thing is, is I think there's a lot of confusion about what it looks like. And surely in all the schools that have implemented it, somebody must have taken a video of some teacher using it in an actual classroom setting that we could get a hold of and see, because there's lots of schools that have done and teachers are often videotaping themselves to improve their own teaching practices. So maybe if we could just see it in action, again, that might reassure a lot of people. So those are just two suggestions that I have.
And that a lot of, many of the teachers who are going to be trying this out next year were very eager, you know, as soon as, we don't need to wait for August 13th when we do our training date. We'd really like to come in and can we just come in and take a look at it and start to play so that we have better questions when we come in on the 13th? And so we'll work with IFL to set up a date so the teachers can get a sense of what it looks like and begin to interact with it even before.
And also to show it here maybe to the board so we can see it.
Or at least make it available for the board to see, maybe not.
Yeah. But I also, every public meeting we've had here is people wanting to see it. So just as we often show other things on, you know, on the screen, we could show that. I think it might help.
I'll leave that up to the board president.
Okay.
Canvas?
I do want to build on that a little bit because I think it's very amorphous initially and, you know, I took some time to think about what my, I don't have a child in kindergarten or first grade anymore, but they still do rotation stations, but it's slightly different. And then look at, looked at the videos that were available on the site and, you know, it becomes easier to conceptualize this when you think about, today we have Wordwall. It's not personalized, right? This might be a personalized version of Wordwall for a child because it's responsive to their level, but it's very similar to what we have. Today we have listening stations. I mean, in kindergarten, they certainly have listening stations for pre-readers, right? So I think we have to dispel the myth that this is some new talk technology that's taking over everything we do today and frame it in that these are things similar to what we do today, this hopefully in many classrooms. I don't know that that's happening in all classrooms, but certainly in the classrooms where my kids have been, there have been listening stations as the teachers are conferencing or having, or even when they have guided reading groups, if not everybody can be in guided reading groups. So I certainly don't think that we are moving towards something where you're displacing our amazing teachers with a piece of technology. That's not what we want. That's not where we're going and I cert, I mean, it's not something that I would be supportive of. What I am supportive of is something that can supplement what we have today, that can help increase the time of individualized time and instruction. So teachers like Mr. Daniels, who's apparently, you know, So teachers like Mr. Daniels, who's apparently, you know, showing amazing growth with a kindergartner, so more of that can happen, right? So more of that one-on-one time can happen, or one-on-a-few time can happen, while other children are still very much engaged. And we have to make sure we keep the balance of engage with one another, you know, read to each other with, engaged with technology, we can't go one way or the other. But I feel like this is the type of, of tool that, that we should, we should try. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I think it's unfortunate that the teachers at Oakden or the teams at Oakden don't feel like it's a place that they can go now, and perhaps that, they will rethink that in the future. I do think it will be somewhat challenging, as we are striving to be so flexible, to the point made earlier, to try to evaluate this in some way. So we're going to have to have, you know, some jet, some bounds, or something, so that you can say, when it was implemented like this, there were these types of results, when it was implemented like this, there were these other types of results. So I totally respect the need for wanting to be flexible, and, because part of any change is, we've got to engage, you know, the teachers and, and to everyone's credit here, we are trying to do that. So I thank you all for, for taking what happened last week and the great discussion we have and moving it forward, and I think we have moved forward. We don't have everything answered, but that's why you do a pilot, is to...
And I, I would also like to thank you, John, for, for taking the time to go out to the schools and answering the questions and gathering in and being so flexible, because I think it was a hard meeting in a way last week, but I think that's what, we're learning what collaboration is in this district, you know? Glad, it's, sometimes it's not all smooth, you know? It's a lot of different opinions and heartfelt opinions, your stances are taken, and learning to how to bring those all together will take us some time, all of us.
Thank you for that comment, and, I mean, that's the intent of using the Google technology, which is a way to add in thoughts and ideas and be able to go back and forth.
I agree that I think it's unfortunate that Oakden may not be a part of this pilot that I think in so many ways answers the call that we as a board asked for, which is how do we use technology? We already use technology in the classroom, how can we use it more effectively? And this seems to be one way that maybe we can do that, and we can learn from it. So it's unfortunate that, that maybe that isn't going to happen at one of the schools that was originally going to be a part of this pilot. I think we might have addressed this last week, but I'm hoping you can just refresh my recollection, because I don't remember the answer. Is there going to be an opportunity to offer this at another school if Oak, if teachers at Oakden decide they don't want to participate, or is that just off the table?
I think at this point in the year, it's, it's off the table.
It's too late to comment.
Yeah. I think there will be opportunities that we can set up for teachers to visit classrooms that are implementing it and see it in one of our own classrooms, talk with a colleague who's been using it and been experimenting with it and using trial and error to try and use the tools to support kids, you know, for, so I think we can set up opportunities to, for teachers to step out of their classrooms and, and visit classrooms that are implementing it and help us evaluate whether or not it's working and if so, for whom.
So we accepted the gift from Lincolnwood for iPads for their primary classes, and so I guess the question is, does the district, does the school, or do the teachers decide how those iPads will be used? And, and could they, if they wanted to, try to utilize this Innovation for Learning program? For their, I mean, they purchased iPads. I guess the first question is, who decides how they'll use the iPads? Is it the district, the school, or the teachers? And then if it's the teachers, I guess, what, you know, what are the boundaries for them?
In terms of the Lincolnwood gift, that was a gift that they received from their PTA.
Yes.
Specifically for the purpose of purchasing technology. And so the, the principal and the teacher will decide how best to use that technology in the classrooms that are able to use the iPads. I, I don't think it will be possible in the next year to use the IFL program on the iPad, because that's two different platforms. We're using it on an Android platform in the schools that'll be piloting next year. It's on an iPad, so it doubles the work for a technology team managing the same program. And it's, I would also just say that Mr. Hunter worked really closely with our Technology Services Department prior to accepting the gift. I know he was here earlier, I think he stepped out, but he did a really good job of making sure that he was working with Joe Caravello to make sure that they got devices that can be easily supported, that would be able to work with the district management system. And so that's what's really, that's one aspect. Unfortunately, we've had cases in the past where teachers have written a grant or accepted a gift of some technology that we can't support, doesn't work on our system, and we don't have the resources to, for any break fix. And so we really just need to try and avoid those types of circumstances where we accept gifts that we can't.
So do you know what they'll be using them for?
I don't, no.
I, I just, why are we doing IFL on Android when we, everywhere else we have iPads? Because it, doesn't it work on an iPad?
It does. There were two reasons. One is because it's about a third of the cost and has no impact on the functionality of the program. The second reason being that when we first, when I first talked with schools and all three schools expressed interest, the original design was to work at one school. When all three schools expressed interest, that was part of the impetus for, is there a way for us to support all three schools? And the answer was very easy, yes. Move to Android devices instead of Apple devices, and you can get three times the number of devices for the same cost. I think the third reason is, is that, again, as we look at the cost of devices and as we look at a technology plan, this is an ideal time for our Technology Services Department, although it's some additional work, for them to experiment in this small way with a different platform. And managing and supporting devices on an Android platform versus an Apple platform and the, the command and control is very different. And so as we think about, and as we develop our technology plan over the next year, if the answer, or if one of the goals in that technology plan is to be a one-to-one district for all students, it's going to be very important for us to have had experience managing devices on two different platforms. So it's, it's, it's a bit of a challenge, but a win in terms of our research and development on the technology side. And again, it was a, a strategy devised for scalability for this project and others and in response to the initial request that we had from schools.
And the PTA gift from Lincolnwood, they specifically said it had to be iPads, it couldn't be Androids.
That was their decision, yes.
Jennifer?
So I'm going to echo a couple of things that have already been said, but I'm going to repeat them, and I'm going to repeat two questions that I asked last week. One, what do we know about the finances of the company, right? So it was brought to our attention that the 2013 990 tax form showed that the company had a debt of almost, it was $1.9 million. So there are certainly places where nonprofits manage their resources in such a way that maybe, maybe there's an explanation, but there was the question about solvency and sustainability that hasn't been addressed. I have to echo the comments about letting people have a look at this, including parents. I think for any good effort to succeed, getting buy-in is important, and I think just letting people have a look at it and a go at it might help change that. And just to echo, my final point is echoing Candace's point about the fact that we already have lots of different technology in our classrooms, even at the K1 grade level, that what other resources are we using? And, you know, there are teachers that use Tumble Books and Starfall, and, you know, there's, you could probably list 10 different types of things that kids use on stations, whether that's literacy, science, math, you know, time for kids, you know, you name it. But what is that sweet look like? When, and especially because you're, we're talking about differentiation, where you might have an emergent or high-level kindergarten reader who wants to be reading something at their station instead of doing phonics. Anyway, that's, those are my three questions that I don't feel like we had answers to yet.
I think I got the first one, what we know about the finances, letting people have a look, and then what was the third question was?
Third one is like, when we're thinking about using technology in stations, in any classroom, but specifically here in K1, what will be on those devices? Because it's prob, I will bet money if you go into those classrooms and you turn on a Chromebook, or you turn on the HP or whatever they have, those teachers have a couple different things that kids are using when they're in a station. So what, what are those things? And to Claudia's question, what's the grid, like, what's the, what's the best of the best look like?
So finances, I have not done research into IFL's finances. It's a not-for-profit, it's also run as a philanthropy, and so, you know, it's got a 20-plus-year history of doing this kind of work, so I'm, I'm not concerned about, about the finances or its solvency to help us through our one- or two-year pilot period.
And on the time that I served on the advisory group with several other people, that never came up. Now, this is, you know, I've been off for all, so that's a, a question about this.
I looked at 11, 12, and 13.
Right.
And there's, it's like this. So I, and maybe it's back up again.
When you say operating as a philanthropic organization, is it fair to say that their model is not to charge ultimately, but to continue to get grants? Because I, I do think we need to understand what the long-term model, business model is for us, you know? Is it continue to be a philanthropy in which you would seek out other grants to, to pay for expansions? I don't think that, I think these questions around long-term, for me, longevity are important, they're not time-sensitive. I mean, they don't need to be, in my mind, to, to feel good about going forward in the pilot. I don't need to have them all answered, but I do think they're important things as we evaluate the pilot and as we obviously decide to, to expand.
Because is the grants, is the grant coming from IFL or is the grant coming from Finnegan Family Fund?
It's a combination of both.
Is it actually a grant coming from the organization or is it just in-kind services that they're providing?
No, the, the grant from Finnegan Foundation...
They're not giving you cash to pay them, right? They're giving you services.
The Finnegan Foundation is giving financial resources to the organization, and the organization is giving a portion of the coaching support in the classrooms at no charge. So that is the part of, they're part of the grant services. I would just, in terms of, you know, the CEO and the founder of this company, who's an Evanstonian, raised his children here, helped start Cherry Preschool, has been a member of this community for many years, quit his lucrative legal career in order to run this company as a mission-driven initiative for himself and for his family. So it's not his objective to make money. When I chatted with him last week by phone, I said, you know, Seth, I'm really sorry, my estimates on classrooms might be a little bit off, because we want to make sure that special education teachers who are supporting classrooms have the device as well, so that they can support their students and they don't have to borrow, go borrow and ask, please... He said, "Don't prob, no problem, don't worry about it." So it's not like, well, I'll send you a bill for that, or we have to see if that fits underneath our grant. His approach in working with me, again, over the three years that I've known him, has always been, we'll do what it takes to make it right for classrooms and for kids. So there's, there's not a, that's, that's his approach to doing work in schools. So that's just, that's what I mean by running the company as a philanthropic organization. Letting people have a look, absolutely, we'll see how quickly we can arrange that and, and help make that happen. In terms of what, the third question, what's applications are on the devices that are being used in centers currently? I have not seen tablets being used in centers in, in the district. There are second-grade classrooms that through the No Child Left Behind Grant or the Title One Grant were purchased iPads for second-grade classrooms in Title One schools. Those are used in different ways, in different classrooms. I've, I've seen that, the only time that I've been in a second-grade classroom where those were being used, it was a, what do I, what do you do when you're done? So when you finished your writing, then you went over and used the iPads. So that's how I've seen the second-grade iPad, just in terms of my personal observation. I really think that's a question that we want to look at as a part of our comprehensive technology plan. Do we want to have devices in classrooms? For whom? And what should they be able to do? And what's the software and what's the hardware that those devices should be able to, to run? I think that question starts with, what are the problems that we're trying to solve? And then what are the software and the hardware that we need to help address those problems? So is the problem differentiation? Is the problem helping teachers prepare faster for their classrooms so they can spend time on other things? Is it, so let's figure out what the opportunities are and what the problems are, and then we design, we can design more comprehensive solutions to that.
And embedded in that is that the technology is a tool to assist the teacher, not a tool that replaces the teacher.
Any final thoughts? I'm just going to try and summarize a little bit.
I would feel better if you can get a copy of the 2014 990.
Is that not available online?
Not, not, not now. It's, I mean, we could call the company, if I thought about it. If you're talking to them, you could ask one, it's going to be public. I mean, they have to do, they have to file it, so it's probably a matter of time before...
There, I wonder, a lot of not-for-profits fiscal years end like June 30th, right? So probably would be soon. Just in summary, I think what's important is that the administration did what the board has asked for in terms of trying to bring new ways to differentiate and help learners across a range of levels of preparedness, and this is one of the ideas that was brought to us. I think over the last week to 10 days, we've heard a lot of ideas, concerns raised by parents and teachers, and I think the biggest thing we heard was, our teachers really bought into this. There were, there are lots of other questions, but really wanting to make sure that if teachers were going to be expected in any way to implement this and manage it in their classrooms, and we were looking at six classrooms at that point, we wanted to make sure there was buy-in. We, it sounds like we've gotten buy-in from three or maybe four classrooms, and we'll be able to proceed with the pilot in, you know, I'd say, a pretty small...
Just three or four teams.
Teams.
Three or four teams, I'm sorry, thank you, that's what I meant, three or four teams, to proceed, you know, there. And I think among the, a few open questions, one that is probably really important is, how is the pilot going to be evaluated? And that one, it seems like heading into the school year, we'd want to have a plan for that. And I suspect you probably would want to have a plan for that, too, just to make sure that there's clarity around that process. So this wasn't an action item, this was a discussion item for the board, and I, I hope that summarizes, I know I didn't cover every single point, but I hope that summarizes our journey over the last 10 days or so. Anything else that needs to be said in summary?
The only thing I would ask is just because our current policy, board policy, does call for us to approve pilots, are we going to have this as a, a voting item, or does, do we not?
Well, we technically, there was a vote when we accepted the money for the pilot. So I think that was the official vote, and then it was kind of reverse order. We should have had more discussion before we did that, but the board did vote to accept the funds for the pilot, which seems like we're actually accepting the pilot then.
Lessons learned for the future, though.
Yes, absolutely.
Discuss first, accept money second, yes.
I think in the future, we should have an explicit vote for approval of the pilot.
Yep, I think that's a, a good point. All right, so we do have on the agenda informal presentations from the public. I would just ask, you know, I think people have had a, a chance, we, we did modify the agenda to give people the opportunity to voice their thoughts while we were having the discussion. So I would just ask that you add anything new tonight, you know, as we wrap up the conversation. Come on down.
My name is Amelia Heron, I'm a teacher at Oakden, kindergarten teacher. So I just wanted to say a couple things. It is unfortunate that our school is not going to be working with this program, but our reservations were very valid reservations about how teachers are going to be able to use this tool, because now it's called, now, you know, we're calling it a tool. So we wanted to make sure that we can use it as a tool, and it's not a prescribed, that's one of the things I, I wrote down, it's not a prescribed program, there's flexibility in adjusting. So based on, you know, the Google Docs that was presented, our... So based on, you know, the Google Docs that was presented, our questions that were answered and also, you know, looking thoroughly through all of the comments, you know, we were just concerned about, you know, the ramping up. There's, you know, there was something that said ramping up, meaning do we, you know, do we use it beginning slowly and then really accelerate with it? So those, that was one of the things. I just wanted to add a little bit of what I talked to with special ed as well. Here's some of her questions. Students that have poor visual memory will have difficulty with isolated words, like, for example, like is the, these words need to be taught in context, so they are meaningful words to the child. Also, you know, one of the things was, the same thing was a demo as the program in action, how does this look? You know, we want to play with it, touch it and foresee some of these issues that will come about with some special ed students. And again, various learners to access the information. So, I mean, those were, those were some of the things that, where we were, you know, yes, no, waving between both. And so one of the things was, is it autonomous, where the teacher will make the decision based on how we see our learners working and what we need to do for them? So that's my, that's.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts last weekend, this weekend. I hope you hear that. The board and the administration both honored the teachers who are interested to move forward and those who aren't at this point in time. All right. Seeing there are no others looking to comment, if there's no further business to be brought before the board, I find this meeting adjourned at 10:18 PM.